Welcome, everyone. It is June 8th, 2021, and I would like to call this regular City Council meeting of the City of Hemet to order. City Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember, roll call. Here. Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
And my.
Here.
All members of the council.
Thank you. First, we have our invocation by John Rains. He's the Communication Director of the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter-day Saints, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Brown. Could you please stand?
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity. We have to meet together as a community with our City Council representatives, and we pray tonight as we meet that the council will be inspired to understand and listen to the needs of the people, and that those members of the community here tonight will strive to work together to find solutions to the problems our city faces, and then we will find ways to be in harmony with the principles of unity and faith, and strive to look out for those that are less fortunate than we are. We pray that we will do our part to revitalize and strengthen each other, that our community will be washed over and protected. We pray for those that serve so faithfully in our armed services, in our police force, and fire, and all the other city officials that strive to strengthen our community and make it a safer and better place to live. And we pray that we will do our parts, that our hearts will be able to listen to the things that we can do individually and collectively to strengthen this great city, and to do our part to keep in mind always the great privileges and freedoms that we enjoy. And we pray for the strength of our council, and that they will be sustained in going forward and accomplishing the great tasks that are before them. In these things, we say, "In the name of the Savior Jesus Christ," amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing, place your right hand over your heart, and join me as we salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Attorney, would you like to report on a closed session?
Madam Mayor, we have no items to report on a closed session today.
Okay. Item number 11 is public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak, they ask that they fill out a speaker slip, and you'll have three minutes. My timer is working tonight. Ms. Brown here fixed it for me, so we're excited and thankful. So, how this works is, at one minute, the light will turn yellow. You'll see like a little warning light, and then that means you have one minute left every three minutes. Don't let people get the hook out. One more thing. I am a passionate person, and I know some of you are passionate as well. Please be respectful with your comments of other people. Okay? So, we will start first with anyone on the teleconference line that would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there's anyone who'd like to speak on the teleconference line, please either raise your hand or unmute yourself now, and now is the time for public comment. See, Madam Mayor, there's no one on teleconference that wishes to speak.
Okay. Next, we'll go to any ecomments that were submitted, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, there are five ecomments, starting with Tom Critzer. The press enterprise reported Sunday that Joe Males is off the head at City Council. Males who stepped down on May 27th so Joe Males can resign, step down from the council seat, that the superior court states be never held. On April 28th, 2021, the court ruled the election by which Males assumed the office is annulled and set aside. That ruling was affirmed one month later. The basis for the ruling was that Males was not resident of District 4 when he filled papers as required. In a Valley News article, May 7th, 2021, quote, "Males admitted he had rented a home in the district but had not yet to move into before filing as a candidate for the open district seat in the court case. How can one be a resident of a place when someone else is occupying it? The lawsuit graph versus Males included the allegation that Males was not registered to vote in District 4. The judge made no ruling about his lawyer registration being in District 5. The judge ruled his lack of residency was enough to annul his election. Candidates are required to file campaign disclosure statements. The last report for the November 2020 election was due February 1st, 2021, covering the period 10/17/2020 to 12/31/2020. All Hemet November 2020 candidates filed these reports on time except for Joe Males for City Council 2020 Committee. When Males' report was finally filed almost four months late, it omitted a $10,000 contribution, among other sloppy reporting, as a 22-year-old resident of District 4, concerned that holding office until a November election will effectively deprive our district of representation for nearly a full year. According, someone would at least partially make up for the representation loss due to tainted annul election. The logical course of action for the council is to appoint a candidate that followed the rules in 2020 council election. These people showed their willingness to perform civic duty by running for office. End of comment. The next comment is by Sandra Madrid.
Uh-oh.
I'm concerned with the statement made at the meeting on 5/18/21. Ann Smith said referring to the Hemet Police is stuff they shouldn't be doing. Our Hemet Police Department is one of the best. I would like to have a clear explanation about this comment and its intent. Thank you. Next is Diana Graff, for item 15C indeed. I'm a resident of District 4 in the City of Hemet. With regard to Joe Males' election annulment, I wish to ask for City Council to not select him as a temporary councilman for our district. It is hard to believe he will have an open mind to the needs for the district. We have seen no evidence of his efforts on our part during this short tenure. His large election donations and legal expense donations from the Fire Department and others will all lead him to these entities. Please consider how this decision will reflect on 4th District and our city. Thank you. End of comment. Kenneth Graff, 15C. My name is Kenneth Graff. I've chosen to submit my comments electronically since a Speaker at a recent meeting said he would run over me with his wheelchair if he saw me. I've been a resident of Hemet for over 60 years. For over four years, I served as a Legislative Assistant to Third District Supervisor Jimmy Venable. For over five years, I was Director of Line Acquisitions and Property Management for the Westerner Recycle County Habitat Conservation Agency, RCA. Answering to the RCA Board made me of, excuse me, made up of five county supervisors and elected representatives for 19 cities. In that role, I oversaw the acquisition of over $110 million in Habitat purchases. Currently, I serve as Zone 4 Flight Control Commissioner for the Third District County Supervisor Chuck Washington, which includes Hemet and San Jacinto. I learned in these roles the importance of elected officials following federal, state, county, and city law, laws and regulations. While Joe Males has taken large cash contributions from special entrance outside of the 4th District, he has not demonstrated that he understands or is willing to follow the rules and guidelines required of an elected. I therefore do not feel he should be appointed to fill vacancy on the Hemet City Council until time, as he demonstrates his understanding of the rules, of his trustworthiness and ability to follow those rules that apply to elected offices. Ken Graff, Hemet 4th District Residence. End of comment. Lasted by the comment, Ian Davidson, under the item subject Joe Males. I do not agree to you to appointing Joe Males. I request you consider other candidates who abide by rules who were residents of District 4 when applications were filed. If you abide by court rulings, you should not appoint Joe Males. End of ecomments.
What was his name again?
Ian Davidson.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we have in-person comments. First, we'll start with Theo Wesson, followed by Eddie George. You only have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Theo Wesson. I'm also talking about the same item. I've been a resident of the city for more than 40 years. I live in District 5, but how District 4 seat is filled affects all residents. This isn't about Joe Males as a veteran, a community volunteer, a parent, a grandparent. It is about the rule of law, a civil lawsuit, and a judge's ruling that annulled the District 4 November 2020 election results, because the candidate he won was not qualified to seek the seat at the time of the filing process. I request that the city take action to post the text of the judge's ruling or judgment so that everyone can read what was said and what was written. This case was not about a stupid technicality. The city needs an estimate of election cost. It may be the City Clerk has that information. It wasn't in the agenda as posted. The city needs that information so that the council can look at the various options available to fill the vacant seat. That information may be of a little at this point. If not, it looks like there's plenty of time to continue this item until the next meeting and can either fill it by appointment, or if necessary, there's time to call an election in November. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Eddie George, followed by Jesse Qualong.
Hey, I'm Eddie George. I'm the one that actually runs the Hemet iNews out here on hemetinews.com, and you know, we've been following this for a while. And, you know, I see there's more corruption in this city than you guys think there is, and it's not who we got on the council, it's the people that's wanting to get their people on the council. And everybody in this room, I know, voted for Joe Males. We all backed Joe Males. And, you know, they're talking about if he's qualified for this job. I mean, how many of you guys think this guy's not qualified for this job? This guy has done so much for the city, but yet he hasn't been able to do much for the city because of this minority that's wanting to go on and get him out before the guy can even do his job, you know? And the guy did what he had to do. He went by the city website. He followed the rules on the website. I mean, it was black and white. It doesn't really matter when you go to pick up your paperwork. It should be a matter when you put your name on that dotted line when you apply for this position. And he was living in that home when he filled that paperwork out. And now we're going to what? Everybody's complaining about this city is already going broke. You know, where's all the city money? You know, we need more money for the city, but yet now everybody just wants to postpone this 15C so that, you know, we can just push this and push this and push this. We don't need to prolong this. We need to do it tonight, folks. We need the City Council to make the decision to let's get Joe back in. I mean, we need Joe. The city needs Joe. And, you know, it's coming down to the votes on our City Council. I know, Senator Cruz, I appreciate what you do on your term. I know this is your last term. So, it really don't matter to you what happens and what decision, but this is really, you know, we depending on Russ Brown. You know, you've got another election coming. You've got another term, I believe, coming. And this is going to really show if you're for the people or are you for the other people? And we judge, you know, or not judge, but we actually voted everybody in. We figured you guys would be the best people for our seats. The people voted you guys. We need you to do the right thing, especially you, Mr. Brown. We need your proper consideration on what to do on this. I mean, we need your vote for the people and not for the power of the people, if you know what I mean. And those power of the people is the ones that's got the money in their pockets, that wants the corrupted people. Carly Meyer could never get her job done. Everybody said, "Well, while we have Carly Meyer in office, you know, why couldn't she never get anything done?" Why? Think about it. Three to two. Carly always got shut down. Carly's decisions could never be made. Well, now Carly's got a team that's actually standing for the people, folks. And what are we going to do? Are we going to let them take Joe Males out of our seat? Well, it's happening, but now it's up to the right people to make the right decisions. All we're going to do is prolong this 15C, put it in another meeting, put it in another agenda. Nothing's never going to get done. What we're going to do, waste the city's money. What's it run, like $100,000 to do another election, a special election? Is that the kind of money we want to see our city spend and we'd be using for something else? You know, we can fix this situation by making the right vote. Russ Brown making the right decision. And I want to appreciate it, and that's all I got to say. If I got any minutes left, I'd give to somebody else.
Mike Wofford.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Qualong. I'm the Senior Pastor of Living Way right up the street here on Latham. I heard a couple comments, you know, read. I heard some people talking, you know, and, you know, saying that they haven't seen Joe do anything. You know, I'm an eyewitness to a man that's come out, picked up dirty needles, picked up dirty underwear, picked up dirty socks, spoke to people that are in the streets that can really use help. And not only am I the only witness, Carly, you're a witness, Malcolm, you're a witness, you guys participated and were out there as we were out there ministering in the street. Now, I know there's this technicality, but, I mean, let's be real. Who hasn't made a mistake? You know, I'm reminded of the verse that Jesus says, "To him who shows no mercy, mercy will not be shown to him." This is something, you say it's a common mistake. We all make mistakes. You know, if I can share just briefly, and I won't keep you long, you know, I have excellent credit. Couple months ago, I got so busy in life, I got so tied up with my kids and my grandkids and the people at the church, I was one day late for the first time on one of my bills ever. It was a mistake. It wasn't like I neglected it. It just happened. And I'm here to say, you know what? For the people that voted the majority, 57% if I'm correct, Lord Joe, I'm here to represent the people. He was voted in. He made a mistake, if that's what you want to call it. I don't know all the details, but hey, who hasn't? Jesus says, when they brought this woman, they committed adultery. And they said, "This woman, the law says that she should be stoned." He said, "He who has no sin, yet unto him the first stone." I don't think any of us here can tell a story.
Mike Wofford, followed by Tom Aldis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Wofford. I own a business in Hemet. I live in Hemet. I sit on the boards of a few veteran organizations in Hemet. We know that Joe is a grassroots man. He's down with the people, getting dirty in the trenches. We know the right thing to do, so let's just do the right thing. I can say everything that everybody else said. Everybody's going to say the same thing. Just do the right thing. Let's bring Joe back. Let's put him back on the streets where he belongs, down in the grassroots, helping the people. You know, we're going to have a special election. We're going to spend a bunch of money, and we're going to get it done anyway, because all these people in this room are going to go to bat. We're all going to hit the streets. We're going to hit door to door. We're going to hit parking lots. We're going to get everybody involved, and we're going to win again. So, I'm sure I got a lot of time left. If anybody wants to really rant, you can have the rest of my time, but God bless Joe Males for what he's been and what he's done. They're not here. Why are they not here? Because Julian was going to run him over with a wheelchair? That's just... They're not here because they don't want to show their faces.
Right.
That's right.
That's right.
That's it.
Let's just do the right thing. We're going to get it done anyway, so just do it now.
Tom Aldis, followed by Stacy Olson.
My name's Tom Aldis, resident District 4, and I had a lot of questions for what's going on with this whole thing. I feel the integrity of the election hasn't been broken here. I'm sure Joe's a great guy. I personally don't know him, but I think we do need to hold another election, to be honest with you. It's, I'm sure it's going to be at a cost, but I mean, I see people that, everything going through our presidential election, and the people feel the integrity is gone there too. I mean, let's do this right.
We did it right first, though.
Well, let me tell you about that. He didn't fill out a form he was supposed to fill out.
Don't comment, please. Don't interrupt, please.
Anyway, that's my opinion, and I'm sure it's one of very few in this room, but have a great day.
Thank you.
Stacy Olson, followed by Janine Harley.
There, Council. We're going to worry about a small technicality of where someone lived or didn't live because he was misled, rather than looking at all of the hard work, sweat, effort that he has put in. What are we more concerned about? Where he lived or what he's doing for the city and for the citizens in it? I'm frustrated, but I'm confident as I speak to you tonight. We shouldn't even be here tonight, even having this conversation, but because of a handful of people that spoke earlier that were afraid to come in, here we are. The overwhelming majority of citizens let their voices and choice be known at the polls. 57% of citizens spoke, "We want Joe Males." Their voices should outweigh those of a handful. For many years, outside influences have had their hand in our politics, and ultimately the stagnant negative results our city has endured. Our city continues to struggle because of their influence. But today, you four have the power to take back the city and honor the overwhelming majority of citizens who voted for Joe Males. Today, you four have the power in your hands to stand for Hemet, to stand for the citizens of Hemet, and to honor their 3,605 votes for Joe Males. To vote no on keeping Joe Males, whose short council record has been progressive and impressive, to say the least, would indicate a clear allegiance to those few select voices, whose record clearly shows a lack of interest in turning Hemet around for the good of all citizens. I believe that each of you desires to see Hemet great again. I believe that each of you would love to be remembered for turning Hemet around. I'm sure that each of you desires, when your turn is over, to be able to speak about the turning point that you were a part of, that forever changed the face and reputation of Hemet. I am confident that your allegiance is to the citizens of Hemet, and I pray that you will step up, stand courageous, and honor the voices of 3,605 residents that clearly said, "We want Joe."
Janine Harley, followed by Carrie Larnett.
Hi, my name is Janine Harley. I'm a member of, citizen here of Hemet. I'm from San Diego, originally born and raised all my life. And I have a few choice words, but they're not bad, don't worry. The first one is vote. I've never missed a vote since I was 18 years old. It was instilled in me. It's what I do. The other one is hate. I hate politics with passion because it's so confusing. And so I don't tend to get involved like this, but another choice word is love. I love this city. Love it. It works for me, and I work for it. It's difficult to find a team that works in unity together, like a well-oiled machine. And I think it hasn't happened here for a long, long time. And last year, I just, from listening to somebody else that I trust talk about Carly, I started paying attention, and now she's our mayor. That happens for a reason. And I believe that movement forward is so incredibly necessary. So, again, I hate politics with passion. The last council meeting that I went to, people got up and spoke, and there was a gentleman that came, excuse me if I don't use the proper terms, Mexican-American gentleman who brought his little girl. And I can look around and see a lot of people, a lot of silver-haired people, this is their community, they've been here a long time, but it's really easy to point the finger, you know, and sit and not be of action. And this gentleman came and he shared with his little girl about Joe. So then, that caught my attention, because if we, if somebody can sit in a living room with one of us and grab his attention and grab his passion to bring his child along to talk, this man works? You know, he's raising a family? I mean, this stuff takes time and energy. And I was so, so that made me passionate for Joe. So, I did my research, and I watched, and I read up on him. And so, I'm here because this team needs to include Joe, because the six-letter word that means everything is action. Actions speak louder than words. Now, I don't know about money and all this, you know, I just hate politics, but I'm living up to the people who can do it. Carly can do it. I had a boss once, oh gosh, can I take somebody else's minute real quick? I had a boss once who told me shit rolls downhill. Right? And, but the truth is, also, good rolls downhill. So, if you've got somebody good working for our community, that rolls downhill. And so then you see our panel that comes around, and again, don't know politics, but I don't know the name, but Joe is a part of it. That's it.
Thank you. Next, Carrie Larnett, followed by Javier Vascoz Jr.
Javier. Real quick, I just wanted to talk about, we have a Bluegrass Gospel Jam that's coming up on Sunday evenings, starting this Sunday, and starts at 7:00, 7 to 9:00. Everybody is invited, and the public is welcome, so if you want to do some Bluegrass yourself or Bluegrass Gospel, you can go ahead, there's a phone number. I've got flyers here to pass out if anybody's interested. Somebody want to talk about? I live in, I've been here since about 2010. Now, I've got a nice little place with horses and cats, dogs, and chickens. I got all these chickens out there, and every morning they lay eggs. And so I get to have eggs every morning for breakfast, and I'm looking down at my breakfast, and I'm looking at these eggs, and our chickens, they got involved enough by breakfast to give me those eggs. And that's what involvement is. You have to be involved in order to do that. Now, I look at my bacon. There was a pig out there that got committed to my breakfast. And he committed himself so that I could enjoy that breakfast. I look at Joe, and he is also committed to this city. He gives everything to this city. I look at the council members here, and I know Carly, she does the same. She's out there, and she gives her all for this city, and that's what we need. We need more people like us to get involved, but they're the ones that do the commitment. They're the ones that submit their time and energy for this city. Joe didn't know that he was supposed to live in that district to become an electorate. He looked at the website, and the website still today, still says that. All you had to do is just be a citizen of Hemet. Joe's not a politician, so he went by what the website said.
That's right.
He was deceived, misled, I guess that's better. He was misled by the city website. I told you, I told you guys earlier, you should change that website so we don't have this happening again, somebody that comes up and doesn't know what's going on, not a politician like Joe, and get it corrected. Anyway, that's what I have to say. We got to do the right thing tonight. Keep Joe.
Javier Vascoz Jr., followed by Joseph Rhodes.
Thanks. The only reason I'm even here, my legs killing me. I'm like that lady, I'm not really versed in console and help the guy try to get elected. The politics were cutthroat. Wow, now from the body, I thought we were bad. But what I would like to say is this. Post 53 was having, which I belong to, was having... Post 53 was having, which I belong to, was having a hard time. Nothing getting done. Money's going this way, that way, arguing between the members. Excuse me if I get a little emotional, not this tough guy I used to think I was. But then, that guy, he steps in, gets things rolling. Gonna help the homeless, gonna help homeless vets, we're gonna clean up this city. Con ho vato, you know what I mean? Marine from the heart. And I'm a ranger, and I don't get along with too many people. But a guy like that comes to this town, like that one dude said, picking up needles, cleaning. I was there, he told me, Louis, I want you to write down all the cars that show up for the cleanup. Hundred and seventy. Hundred, that don't sound like a lot, but a hundred and seventy cars, there's a lot of cars. And he had me get the map together, ain't much of a map, it's just Hemet, all the districts. And that's what he wants to do, start here. Because he said, this is what he told all the people cleaning up, we have to start somewhere. This place is falling apart, and there's no reason for it. Not when you guys, because I don't care about your politics. You're either my friend, you're not, hey, man, this city's big, go where you want to go. But you have the right, for your children, our children, to live in a clean city. That's our right. And when somebody like him comes in, and he's one of them marine dudes, you know, it's always serpere fee and that early word they use, that, hey, let's get busy. We follow him. That's why there's a lot of us here today. Because it's not easy to follow people. Most people are bullshit, you know, but when you see him, like the first guy out there, handing out food for the homeless. But another good thing about him is he brings people together. So, why should one organization in this town do a little bit of work here, fighting with another? The Alps fed us after we did that. The city council was involved with Joe. Cindy Lemke was there picking up trash. What Joe does is he unifies, okay? Now, after I talk, I'm gone. I'll probably tip over in front of you before I hit the stage. But I had to come because it's up to you guys. And we know what politics is, we see it. We see what they did to our capital. And I don't care what political persuasion you are, you do not treat our flag like that, you do not treat our people like that. And there's a small microcosm of that, of everybody not getting along. But when an individual can come in and unify the people, and not only talk about getting stuff, like that guy said, get it done. Picking up trash, feeding people, working extra hours to make sure people get presents for Christmas. Come on, man. Okay, oh, my time, yeah, I'm so sorry. Just, I'll just say one more thing. I've seen this a couple of times now. And even though we're all kind of religious people, man, if you remember this, what a person does in their lifetime echoes for eternity. Remember that. That means what you do today is how people will view you tomorrow. And when you have a person like him, and they're gonna boot him out for whatever, I don't get involved in all that. But when they say he hasn't did anything, oh no. In that short period of time, he did more than people I've seen in the council or organizations. That's what I have to say.
Joseph Rhodes, followed by Julian Perez.
Okay, I'm Joseph, Joseph Rhodes. Most people know me from living away of Hemet. And, you know, first I need to, you know, I've never been in disaffection any of you guys because you guys are all good people, but, you know, I've heard so much about what the press enterprise. That stuff was like Charmin, I wouldn't use it, you know? Because it's garbage, you know? And not only that, gentlemen, I don't even know who you are, sir. Well, I'm gonna tell you something, don't buy into something that you're not real certain of. Because, see, I was on the city website.
Mr. Rhodes, you addressed the council.
Oh, okay. So, I was on the city website, and I looked. I looked at all the forms that needed to be filed. 501, the 460, the, hold on, I gotta give you the last one. All right, so, 501 was filed on 8/10/2020. These papers, those papers was polled on 7/20/2020. Papers were filed on 4/10. The signatures qualified on 8/10. They polled the 700 to 497 several times there, the 460 and the 501. And the reason why I'm just bringing this up, because it really bothers me, first off, if anybody just tells a clean and bad story, and then they want everybody to believe it, they put it on social media, Facebook, Twitter, whatever. All that stuff is just, to me, is just stupid. People are, they're coming to you. I've been coming here, I don't know how long now, but I've been to a few of your meetings here. Every time, people keep telling you the same thing. How many times would your child tell you that he's hungry before you get up and feed him? You need to listen to what the people are saying. You were elected by the people, and these people are coming. Kenneth Graff and a few others that made their comments, they don't show up. They don't show up, they just throw it out here on the internet. And that kind of stuff is just, it's crazy. If you got a voice, speak up. Come, put the time in like everybody else is sleeping. Guys, you guys are doing a great job. Keep doing the right things, listen to what all these people are saying. Because I know it was on your agenda tonight for vacant seat, but tonight's a great night to vote for and put him back on the seat, even if it is temporarily until we have a runoff election. Because two to two or whatever, you know, if you're all on one side or whatever, then it works out great. But if not, then it's not working good for the people. Is that red light for me to stop talking?
Julian Perez, followed by Jacob Deanserker.
All right. This, Mr. Kenneth Graff, I'm gonna apologize to him for him thinking that I'm gonna re-run him over. I mean, it's ridiculous, but that's okay, though. He should be here, they shouldn't be talking on here. They should get their bus down here, just like I do. Okay, I'm handicapped, I know that. I got one faith, I'm standing up right now for a reason. God told us that we have to have faith in ourselves and our fellow people, am I right, Pastor?
That's right.
All right. My thing is, is I don't know how much you guys know, but I'm gonna let you know something. Joe has a lot of faith in this inner circle that's here today. And I'm asking you to have the same faith in that man as he has in you. He believes in you guys. Isn't that what faith is about, believe? And I know for a fact, I talked to my brother, my brother's been a member of the Hemet town here for 72 years. And he told me to tell you guys one thing. You better believe that he don't really speak a word against all this, but he will fight and help us bring Joe back in if we have to have an election. You guys have already saved money, if I'm not lying. You saved money already as a group, as a team, because you believed in each other. And Russ, I'll tell you one thing, as a meeting air, and I might be out of line for saying this, but I know that when we were in the military, we were taught to have each other's back. And I'm asking you, Russ, as a friend, because you are my friend, and you're my fellow meeting air, make the right vote, my friend. I really, I really bring this team, you know? Another thing too, you know, my other two comrades, they're not here today. But that's okay, because I'm gonna represent them too, William and Johnny. We're the only team, the only three was between San Antonio and Hemet that we represent you guys. We'll be going to New York to represent Hemet. But if I go feel like Hemet deserves to be represented, then I'll just represent myself. And that's what I'm just trying to tell you guys. I love Hemet to death. And I would do anything to make Hemet better. When I, I have tears when I go by certain parts, because I don't seem to explain that. But we're gonna make it better through the help of everybody, through you guys. So, believe in them, and they should believe in you. And remember, man, that's the one thing about it, is it's time for us to bring that different people back to the United States. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Next, we have Jacob Deanserker, followed by Pat Gregory.
Good evening, my name is Jacob, and we're all, we're all here for one thing, and I asked Joe tonight, and I've had the privilege of meeting Joe. And he's done a lot for this community in the short time that he's given. Trash, homeless, veterans, and so on. The people voted for Joe, and it's clear. I'm reaching out to the council to take into consideration what the people want. Take a good look around what the city has become over all these years. It's time for change and a start review. Let Joe finish what he started, thank you.
Pat Gregory, followed by Marion Darwin.
Good evening, council members. First of all, my name is Pat Gregory, and I am not afraid to voice my opinion in person. I respectfully request that all members of this council appoint Joe Males to fill the vacancy in District Four. Joe Males won the election by a substantial amount of votes. The voters of District Four have decided a minor and insignificant technicality should not give the loser, Mr. Madrid, a second chance. Mr. Graff has gone to a lot of trouble and expense to try and overturn a decision of the voters. I'd like to respond to Mr. Graff's letter that was read at the last council meeting. Mr. Graff is determined to challenge the integrity of an election. Yet, when Bonnie Wright, prior to time mayor and long-term council member, physically moved out of her district, she came back inappropriately and voted on a contested budget. Where was Mr. Graff? Where was Mr. Graff when his wife and other members of the First Measure U Committee failed to demand an audit of the Measure U funds as they were obligated to do so? Note, Mrs. Graff was not reappointed to the Measure U Committee. People need to learn to lose gracefully. The hypocrisy of Mr. Graff should point out that some members of this community are more concerned with their own agendas than with what is right for Hemet. The people have voted for Joe Males. Nonwithstanding Mr. Graff's attempts to circumvent the will of the people, the council, all council members, should appoint Joe Males. Hemet needs Joe.
Well said.
The council needs to either call a special election or needs to appoint a qualified individual to the seat. I do have some additional information there regarding when you call the special election. So, Government Code Section 465, what we talked about, requires that the election, you have the next regularly scheduled election date, and there's several in the code that is not less than 114 days from the day of the election is called by the city council. So, if the city council calls the special election before July 11, July 11 is a Sunday, so we'll say before July 9, which is Friday. If the city council calls that special election by that date, then the special election will be held under Elections Code 1000, Section 1000, subdivision C, which is the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. In this case, that would be November 2nd, 2021. If the city council decides to call the special election after that day, or if the city council takes no action and is forced to call the special election, then the special election, the end of the election will be April 12, 2022. So that would be under Elections Code, Section 1000, subdivision C, which is the second Tuesday of April of each new member. At this time, it's unknown, and this is at the time of the staff report, it was unknown if the special election would be consolidated with other elections. Since that time, they never see the word, but we know Valley will be having a special election. It looks very likely that we will have a statewide election on the question of whether to recall the governor, and if so, to appoint a successor. But we don't have any certainty if our election is gonna go forward by that date or not. It hasn't been called yet. If the recall election does go forward, it would likely lead to some cross-sigmas to the city. Next, the other option besides calling the special election is to do an appointment. This city council, and most city councils, fill vacancies on their councils by appointment regularly. Typically, there is some kind of application process, interview process. And one of our council members will do that process itself. And he will be appointed by the council. There's no requirement, State law, and City's code, you can go through that process. You're perfectly capable of making a direct appointment of a certain year. And I know some has been activated with the council. The only requirement would be those found in the municipal code on State law, which requires that the candidate be a resident of District Four and under the municipal code, be a registered voter of District Four. So if you could take action, call the special election, if you have the resolutions prepared. So there are part of the backup, if you can count on you to call the special election, it'll work now. You could have motion to appoint somebody, or you could give alternative direction. So, do you additional information on any of these items? If you would like to discuss appointment process, the staff direction, I'll set that up, you can do that as well. If you do appoint somebody, whether you take the seat immediately this morning, and continue their on. I think that covers everything of that, a little of the state board. Do you even have any questions on the agenda?
All right, council, questions, comments, discussion? I do have a question. On the, you said, in the term updates there, that council would have to call a special election by July 29th. Or if it's to be on November 2nd, the decision would have to be by July 11th or July 9th, whatever. Now, the question is, if we, as a council, decide to go through the process of applications as we've used in the past, would that decision then have to be made before the July 9th date?
No. So, if I'm following the question correctly, what you're asking is, do you have to appoint someone by July 9?
Well, that, but if there's not a decision by July 9th, you still would have to notify the registrar by July 9th that you go to the special election because the decision hasn't been made.
That, that is true. Uh, that, that is true. So, if the council could attempt to go through an appointment process, and if you pulled the ripcord, as it were, on July 9th, and said we're unable to come to an agreement, uh, if you're going to call special election, um, if you call it by July 9th, the law allows you to have that special election in November. Uh, there is one caveat to that, of course, which is, that is what the, uh, Government Code says. Um, our registrar voters always have their own deadlines that they attempt to impose upon those who wish to use their services so that they can be adequately prepared for the election. Um, and I hope that I've stalled all that because it's towards the very end of the question, and it knows it's coming, which is, what deadline would the registrar voters have given?
The last day to send out a resolution to the registrar is June 23rd.
And so that's the deadline the registrar has given us to conduct our election?
Correct.
In November?
In November.
Okay, so if the registrar would like the resolution from the City Council, uh, it looks like you, if you just didn't regulate it, you could look at the documents at the next regular meeting. Um, it looks like the, they're very close. We could certainly talk to the registrar voters. Uh, I've had many election issues where they give us a deadline, because they wind up these going, but if it were to come down with, they could fudge it for another week or two. Um, we can certainly talk to them about that. Um, but it sounds like they would like a decision sooner than I would.
We don't want to fudge dates, because that's the whole reason we're here.
Thank you, Paula.
Can I add a comment? So, so I was kind of thinking about this. This is a very difficult. The pros to doing, to just, you know, I would say, appointing, uh, Mr. Males would be something like avoiding the cost of the special election. Um, avoiding the political strike. Um, example, or, so in, we, we could say in November, for example, people trying to score points on various topics that, like, we, we once agreed upon, but then they kind of changed their mind and went and vote, or something like that. Um, that's what I mean by political strike. To get someone in the seat sooner so that the portion, at least District Four, doesn't have to wait. Um, you know, example, you know, who would the residents of District Four contact during, while, while they are seated vacant? Who would they have to represent your voice and, you know, complaints and things that they bring up if, if the seat remains vacant? A couple of cons. Like, we really wouldn't, based on what just came in, we really wouldn't save, uh, too much, because we're going to have to have to elect as, as well. So, we're going to have to go through an election anyway. So, and then another con would be, why should us four be responsible for, um, electing a representative to represent District Four if none of us live in District Four?
Right.
Um, if the
That's right.
Another one too is if the I think if we're not able to agree on, you know, who to fill the seat with, or, or how we're going to go about this, then it would just mean that it was just simply impossible. Um, the judge, I don't, okay, so, I'm trying to look at this from a very objective, um, standpoint. So, the judge have the law in front of him, this is what, at least I'm envisioning, he has the law in front of him. And while the law is clear that, you know, uh, Joe may not have established residency, may not have had established residency, um, knowing him, I don't see any malicious intent, like he was trying to, um, like he had some kind of agenda or something like that. I remember someone saying that he had personal reasons why he ran. Um, I think that anybody who runs for office has personal, there's, there's something personal either in the city, the state, wherever they're running for, there's something personal that they would like to adjust, and that's the reason why they ran. So, I don't really understand how someone could say someone had personal reasons. Um, we all have personal reasons for why we make the decisions we make. Uh, someone once said to me that you don't, you do not get to not choose the poison, because if you no matter what, you're going to have to make a choice, right? So, it's best to at least choose the poison you're going to take. Does that make sense? Um, how I see it is the city established districts, and I think 2016, isn't it? And it appears to be fairly new as far as district names is concerned. And I think this resulted in, um, the city's website not being updated. And, um, essentially, you could say the city did the same thing. Why not, you know, why not update it? And so, now the city isn't responsible, you know, you know, to make sure that people follow the law? That's not the city's job. And I don't think, you know, it's only, I think it's just on the, on the individual themselves to comply. Now, when it comes to Mr. Joe Males, it's, it's, um, I think it's imperative to understand that if he's looking at a city website, and he's putting his trust in city government, and he agrees, you know, you know, as long as you're a resident. I mean, before, I think another mistake that I, I saw too was that before the districts were here, all you had to do was be a, a resident. You didn't even have to, to live in a specific area. So, I think that's another reason why it was kind of overlooked, because it just kind of fell through the cracks. And so, you have this, um, gentleman who's trying to, who wants to, to run for City Council, and then he goes based on this website. And I would also add that, you know, it's not an excuse, but it's something like, you have a, a, a member of the community who's at least trying to fill this space of responsibility according to the Constitution, and being a voice for his, for the district that he's running for. I think that he is a man, you know, I, I kind of feel out of place up here, because everyone, you know, fence is, is older than me. And I can't, sometimes I can't relate to some of the things that they, it's very difficult to relate to some of the things that they, they address and talk about. And I see him as a person who maybe grew up in a time where you went on handshakes, or something like that, then you went off somebody's word.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's like, uh, today you have to, now we have attorneys, and we have all the, because you can't just go off the handshake, because somebody could just steal the house from under you. You had made a handshake, we're going to do this deal. And then it's taken from you because you didn't have a contract. I don't, like, within my heart of hearts, as a, as a, as a mental health therapist, I, I use some of my background to almost interrogate him to see if there's any malicious intent about him running for City Council. And none of my lie detectors I didn't pick up anything, you know? And so, if, city attorney, is it the case that had he had waited a couple of days, this, we wouldn't even have to be having this discussion?
Um, if, if he had established residency, uh, Before he pulled the paper, he pulled the papers. Um, then the judge would likely have knocked on the door and he'd get on that issue. Uh, there were other issues that the judge didn't rule on. Um, but the residency, I think, was the most contested one. Uh, so, you know, I, I can't build a time machine to go back and see what happened, but I would say that if he established the residency and then pulled the papers, yeah, we would not have this issue.
Should have cleared the website.
I know, and that was one thing, so, okay. I agree with the judge's decision, because it's the law, right? They have dates and stuff like that, they kept it compartmented, I agree with that. But when it comes to the, to the spirit of the law, I think it's more in the case that, um, he had intentions, like, it's almost like, like, at least according to the psychological literature, that when a person's happy, they make the dumbest decisions. Because there's so many endorphins, there's dopamine, there's serotonin, there's so many things happening within a person's neurological makeup that causes a person's frontal lobe to be disenfranchised just for a moment. So, I could see someone who was excited to do something about the city, and, and like, take his place and what that looks like, and then rush out there like a, like a, like a happy person, you know what I mean? Not really thinking about I'm doing this too early, then just slow down, you know? Maybe that's the case, maybe that's not the case, maybe I'm reading in too much because I'm a therapist. But, at the same time, I see an individual who's honest, and has a significant amount of integrity. And, um, I think that counts for something, at least in America, that we, 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 we live off of integrity, and we live with at least, and the back, the backgrounds of our minds are about the responsibility of it, you know? We have an ability to respond to things in our lives. Now, one of the reasons why I ran for government is to kind of make a plan for the city that it can include, like, a maintenance process, or something that that measures the growth of the city, that ensures that everyone in the city is getting what they need, their needs are met, it's clean, and we have things in process to make sure that as needs are met, as roads are constructed, as things are happening, that we continue with that process, and we just build upon it. I didn't, I didn't, the years of me being here, I didn't really see that happen. And having a couple of discussions with Joe Males, I can see that his heart was, like, towards that, you know? So, I didn't necessarily, um, have supported his candidacy, because I didn't really know him at the time. But as I got to know him, I saw that he was a man of integrity, and that he was a man that just wanted to do right, and, and obviously, been a saint. And I don't think we should penalize him like we're all perfect or something like that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
A couple of other things is we have, um, ordinances, I don't know if you guys know this, but we have ordinances right now that if you're under the age of 18, you could be fined for hosting or teaching a dance class. In 1997, there was an ordinance passed so that people could play bingo here. Um, an ordinance on skateboard, needing per, anybody riding skateboards needed permits on wherever they were skateboarding at. So, if we're going to follow this law stuff, you know what I mean? Then we're going to have to be going out here and giving citations to a bunch of people. You know, nobody's teaching dance classes at under 18, but, you know, I see a lot of skateboarders out there. No camping ordinance? So, what are we going to do, you know? So, federal law trumps that. At the same time, there's a lot of stuff that we have to have updated in here. And I think that when we, when we, when we're looking at all these things, and we're updating what's happening, that if, you know, something like, you know, some of you guys have said it was like a technical kind of thing. You could say that, but it was, it was the law. And the judge made a decision based on the law. But at the same time, I think we can, at least in this case, work with the, the spirit of the law. We have our sister city in Japan, Maori Maori, you know, from the Miyagi factory in Japan. And if that, that name Miyagi sounds familiar, it's, uh, it's where Mr. Miyagi from the karate kid was from. And it comes from, you know, the karate, he was, he was, uh, involved in, it comes from a practice called Tenshu, which is a farm of karate that emphasizes always moving and never stopping. And I think we should take a lesson from our sister city, at least our sister city's name sake, and we too should always keep moving and never stopping. And I think this council has been moving for at least the last seven months, at least that's what I hear from you guys, and what's been my experience on here as a councilperson. And I think if we don't act or appoint tonight, we will become stagnant. I would like to make a motion to appoint Joe Males to the
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Uh, I'll second this for further discussion. Paul. Let me say first off, this isn't about Joe Males' dedication to the community or to the American region for his efforts to organize cleanups and such things. He does do a wonderful job. He goes out in the community, he gives out his support, and he does these things. This is about following the law. And go ahead, you know something? I didn't make a noise when you were all up there hounding me. So, give me the same satisfaction of you sitting here listening to me without your moans and groans and comments. This is America. I have as much right to speak and to speak my opinion as you do. And I never once interrupted anybody at that point, no matter how much I disagree with them. This is America. I have the right to speak. And I heard that, thank you. This has to do with everybody following the same laws we get after. It is not a minor or a small technicality. Mr. Males obviously knew he had to move if he wanted to run in District Four. He made a mistake. He didn't get his paperwork done in time, and he didn't get his lease done in time. Therefore, the judge vacated the election. Yes, I'm, like I said, I'm not going to condemn a man for making a mistake, that he didn't do his homework. It's that simple. He's no longer a councilman. We also have had a process in the past when we've had vacancies of accepting applications, and talking to the applications, and making the decision of four councilmembers. I've been occurred that twice before. The process works. If Mr. Males wants to apply, he's free to apply. He obviously has qualified at this point, because he does live in Seven Hills, and he is a registered voter of Seven Hills. So, I am in favor of going through the process. We've had many special meetings already this year. We can squeeze a few more in the next two weeks at the deadline to get to the registrar is June 23rd. I am for a process, and I will vote for that process.
Well, it comes down to me, right?
It comes down to us.
And, uh, I, I want to reiterate Linda's comment. All of us are bound by Resolution forty-five forty-five, which speaks to proper civil decorum at these meetings. And, you know, we all should be afforded the courtesy of no capos, no mounds and groans when we offer our comments. And as Linda said, we all sat quietly while you offered your comments, some of which I agree with, some of which I didn't, some of which I believe were exaggerations or distortions of facts. You're all entitled to your opinions, as we've heard the saying, you're not entitled to your own facts. And I have to also echo Linda's comment. This is not a personal issue about Joe Males. I know Joe Males. Joe Males and I worked collaboratively together to accomplish some things at The Post. And, and we're making progress at The Post. When all of this surfaced, I intentionally became conspicuous by my absence at all of The Post activities. And I did so intentionally, not because I don't like Joe Males or anything else, but I am a person who understands and respects law. I spent thirty years as a law enforcement officer. Rule of law matters to me. It's important that we follow the rule of law. And there's a law that I was concerned about. If I had been involved in anything at The Post activities, there was a very good likelihood that the subject of Joe's situation would come up. And Joe and I could conceivably converse about that. And if I had a conversation with another member on that same topic, knowing full well that it was gonna come to a council vote, that's a violation of the Myers Milliers Brown Act. That's a law that can cost us monetarily, it can cost the city monetarily. And I did not want to put Joe or myself in a situation where we might inadvertently commit a violation of the Brown Act. As I said, I am a supporter of the rule of law. And unfortunately, I think we've all witnessed what's been happening to our country over the last several decades, where laws don't seem to matter anymore. People seem to do whatever they want to do, when they want to do it, and how they want to do it, whether it's not stopping at stop signs, or speeding, or having violent protests that cause damage to personal property. And they, and they do that under the premise of freedom of speech or a situation where people shoot off illegal fireworks and disturb other people's peace and, and cause problems with people who have PTSD, P S T D? Yeah, yeah, you can say the word right. P T S D. And also totally inconsiderate of people who have pets and animals that are frightened by the fireworks. They show no regard for that. This council took action to try to address that. We enhanced the fines and we even made it a violation to where if you shoot off fireworks and it's on your property, whether you're the one that did it or not, you're accountable for that. And we've had to take actions like that because as a society, we've become way too complacent and don't respect the rule of law anymore. And once you stop following the rule of law, that's the thing that separates a civilized society from anarchy. And once you start to blur the lines, it's just a matter of time before the line completely disappears. And that's not some, not something that I want. I don't think it's something that any of the listeners in this room would want to have happen. I do believe in following the process. And this, the city has a precedent that was set. I'm a result of past practice. There was a vacancy when Paul Raiver resigned from the council. And the city went through a process. They solicited applications, there was a deadline set, and the applicants that met the deadline were interviewed right here in this room publicly in an open council meeting. And the council went through a process to select somebody. And I was the person that ended up getting selected. And no, it was not even that in this vote, but I was selected as a result of that process. And so I think that based on past practice and precedent, I'm all in favor of following our past practice and precedent self by establishing a process. I'm not an advocate that we wait and, and have a special election in November. I think that that's far too long for District Four to be unrepresented, although that's a little bit of a misnomer because when I, when I ran for council and was duly elected and not appointed anymore, I had to do so by district. And that's an artificial boundary that the city was forced to create to establish these districts that limited where we campaigned and limited the people who could vote for us. But once we're elected to this council, it's my firm belief that each and every one of us, whether we came from District Five, One, Three, Four, doesn't matter. We are a representative of all of the citizens of this community, not just the district that we ran in. And I firmly believe that we have a responsibility to make decisions that are in the best interest of the vast majority of the people in this city, not just one district or another. So on that premise, I would advocate and support going through a process to solicit applications for appointment consideration, and we do so at the earliest possible convenience.
And Joe Males didn't file his papers too late. He filed his papers early. And if Joe Males, well, the city should be glad that Joe Males was not Harley Meyer. Because if I followed what was posted on the website of the city for the shooting and did not have my attorney go over every move that I made because somebody could be misleading, I would be suing the city.
Amen.
Because what he does, what he has done over the last seven months is inhumane. And what we are doing tonight, by not even considering the election that was already contested and the voters still voted for him, is it was already under lawsuit and publicized all over Facebook. Everybody, everybody already knew about it and he still won. But if we decide to ignore the voters, I want to know how are we encouraging the next guy that wants to run for office that's not a professional politician to trust, to trust the city, to trust the instructions that come from the city pro-chef? That's a big deal.
That's right.
And I, and I have one question that I want both of you, Linda and Russ, to answer for me. If you are Mr. and Mrs. Letter of the Law, I want you to tell me how you can justify a three-two vote when Bonnie Wright moved out of the state? Because that was not an intent.
Amen! Worst of all, man!
I need you to be quiet. I, I want to know how you can justify that vote because that would have changed the outcome of our Measure U balance right now, tonight, today. And she was out of the state and drove back and voted in a meeting that was a controversial vote, which would have failed if she did not do that. So if you want to talk about intention, Joe was overzealous and went and picked up a packet two days early. Bonnie left the state. She didn't move out of the city. And you had no problem with that. I want to know, what do you think about that?
Well, had I known that she, all I knew was that she had stated that she was resigning from the council and that she intended to move, but I didn't make any effort to delve into what transaction she had made or whether she was still in her house in a process of escrow. I didn't do that.
So on a sworn affidavit, the state of California, in order as she said that she did all this, please. So how are we gonna make that vote right? That was your yes vote and your yes vote.
We have to go back and revisit it. And I think that post question was posed to the city attorney at the time. And to my recollection, it was left unresolved.
And then you think it's more left unresolved, that way? All right, are there any more comments, questions? All right, can we have a local vote? Because we have a motion second on the floor.
We have a motion to appoint Joe Males for a district, uh, councilmember. Motion made by Councilmember Roanoke, seconded by Mayor Meyer. Councilmember Dan?
No.
Councilmember Creighton?
No.
Councilmember Roanoke?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
And she fails a tie vote actually to, and the motion did not pass.
Well, he'll listen to the people.
Do you have any more?
They do listen to the people.
Is there any other discussion or any other motions on that?
I would like to make a motion that we attempt to fill the vacancy by soliciting applications and setting a date for the council to interview all of the applicants and make this election from those applicants. We can vote soon.
And I will second that. Any discussion?
When, if, if, can that, um, can that application be nameless? What do you mean nameless? When they submit the application, obviously they're gonna put their name on it, but when we get their applications to review it, that their names are covered.
I know, I miss.
Um, and I don't support this at all. Because I'm not going to vote my place, I think, I'm not going to vote for the people. People voted, and if we're not gonna go for the vote of the people, then I think we need to go to an election.
We passed the city attorney, um, if he has a response to Malcolm's question about. If we, if I understand, you're, you're proposing that we would review the qualifications of each applicant without knowing their name and, and render our decision on who we recommend on that basis?
Well, because, um, when it came to the review, the shots were fired when people started making claims that it was unfair, you know, um, whatever. And I think that we, as far as transparency is concerned, the law of council protocols we've designed is that we should take their names off and just read it for, for out of, in our votes based on that.
I think it's impossible. And the fact of the matter is Eric Gash spent fifteen thousand dollars running a campaign against me. That wasn't some secret that happened. So when his name is on something, of course he's gonna give the lowest vote for me. That's just goofy. No offense, but names mean things and people have reputations. And there are consequences for their actions.
So, I'd like to know, the city attorney, if that's you, then.
Sure. I mean, the council is capable of establishing a procedure that it wants to follow. So if a council wants to receive applications with the names blacked out for me to consider, uh, I mean, if you have at some point, we're gonna have to know who the people are because we're gonna have to make the nomination and the motion for one of those. Uh, I, I do think just speaking generally, I, I think there's a practicality issue with it. Um, you know, we're gonna have to have the address of the applicants on there. We're gonna have to make sure that they're qualified and actually residents, um, of the district. Uh, so we're gonna block that information out too, if you guys don't know it, it's gonna be difficult. Um, in general, speaking of the application questions, I wasn't able to find the tape of the last interview. Uh, but I think it generally asks you questions like, how, you know, what have you done in the community? What are your ties to these people? Uh, my suspicion is that if you know some of the people well enough, you'd be able to derive who they are based on their answers. So I think that you could establish a process that kind of line initial screening, uh, Councilmember Roanoke, I, I would say that there might be some practical issues in the way of actually making it further away than sort of.
Malcolm, I think I, I understand what you're trying to get at and, and I, I may well don't disagree with, with your concept, but, um, just, just to review the process that where I was first appointed, each applicant was interviewed right here. So we're gonna know who we're talking to, um, and, and we have an opportunity to ask them questions. We'll have their application, uh, if they include a resume, we would know more about them. And, and at least in my experience, each candidate was asked the same battery of questions. So the council had the ability of hearing their answers. And, and by the way, all of the applicants were sequestered out of the room. And they were brought in one at a time. And, uh, once they were interviewed, they were able to sit in the audience. But no, no candidate had the benefit of hearing the questions before they were at that roster or the, uh, meeting question. I know, I don't want us involved. I'm sorry, not what? I don't want us involved in it. I think we should do an election. That's not because of her, it's just because I, I promise you guys that when I got on this council, I don't have any kind of agenda, I don't have... But there were some comments made that, based on the way I voted concerning people on Measure U, it was unfair. And so to take out that ambiguity or to keep that out, I don't think we should be involved in it. Yeah, I think I'd like to make a substitute, what'd you say? Substitute motion? Yeah, to get out of an election. I mean, it's only, we got along like forty grand, better than a hundred.
I'll second your motion.
Uh, and to clarify, the back substitution means to adopt the resolutions that are part of that, uh, calling for a special election.
Can I ask the city attorney a question?
Um, okay, okay. Um, do you have any further discussion?
On the basis of my second to the substitute motion, I'll withdraw my previous motion.
Do you want to go ahead and start with your previous motion?
We have a motion by Councilmember Roanoke, seconded by Councilmember Round. Councilmember Round?
Yes.
Councilmember Creighton?
Yes.
Councilmember Roanoke?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes to approve stat recommendation number one to move forward with a special election.
I think our council has done a lot this year, and we've done it all together. We really have a big seat for a while. But I don't think it's going to change the direction that we've all decided because we've had the unanimous vote in some direction. So, I don't, I wish I could all of you to keep moving forward the same way. Um, all right, item fifteen D, City Council. All right, item fifteen D, city council.
Annoye, Malcolm, voting for him.
Seven, that.
Motion made by Councilmember Ruinball, seconded by Councilmember Crouppen.
Tom Brown, sorry. It's being by, versus by Brown, and sent by Brown.
Motion by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Crouppen, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppen?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruinball?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes to approve denunciation of Mayor Proton, is Malcolm, voting for him.
All right, next to all.
So what is your thoughts on tonight's outcome of the meeting with City Councilman Joe Males?
Well, I think Mayor Carly hit it right on the button when she reversed it and asked what was their thought if they, you know, stood for the law against Joe, but yet against another candidate in a previous time, it was kind of swept under the carpet.
It's like the law didn't matter on that situation.
On that situation, that's exactly the way it appears. But you know what, we'll just pray, we'll move forward, and you know what, vengeance is mine, say it to the Lord. And so we'll just leave it in his hands and take it from there. But I believe Joe will be back, because the people voted for him once.
We're going to vote for him again.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
All right.
What's your thoughts on it, Joe?
Well, here's what we're going to do. We're going to, we're going to organize a District Four party, we're going to start coming, knocking on doors, talking to people about what's happened, what transpired, what has been happening here, the wrongdoing. We need to update our city website to match what the law says. So we have a slight technicality here. Basically, he just filed a couple of days earlier than him actually moving into the place. So, and after I went and checked through the county records today, all, and I do mean all means all, all paperwork was filed by Joe and received by the county clerk, got personal stamps that are on it. So I went over that. The only thing that I can see was that it was filed a couple of days, a matter of like about four days earlier. So everything's done, we're going to be coming around, like I said, we're going to form up a committee, a party, and start nailing out District Four and just getting people, just getting people to just recognize what has happened, it's a great injustice if you demand one-two to one, and they're not honoring it, you know? But our mayor, Malcolm, totally stood up and really stepped up. And I even got to give it to Russ, he went off of what his beliefs were, but Linda, on the other hand, you can't get mad at the people, that's unacceptable, you just can't blurt it out, you know? So that's where we're at, you know? Anybody who wants to come and talk to me, they always know where I'm at. They always know where I'm at. And there's obviously, there's absolutely nothing that anybody could ever say, oh hey, Joseph's been a bad guy. Because I had. But you know what, twenty-one years, twenty-one years in the making, God has changed my life, you know what I mean? So hope to see you all soon. Thanks, vote for Joe.
I don't know where we cut, go ahead and start it over again.
Okay. I'm Mike Watford, I have a business in the city of Hemet, I live in the city of Hemet, I care about this valley and its people, and Joe Males cares about this valley and its people. He's a grassroots guy, he's down in the trenches, helping out with everyday things that happen in this city. He's a man of the people. We put him in there with a two-to-one vote, folks, and we're going to come knocking on your door, and we're going to ask you to vote again, because we're going to pull this special election. And we're going to come knocking on your door, just do what you did before. That's all you got to do, is step up and vote for Joe. He did nothing wrong, this is a technicality that really doesn't matter. Russ Brown talked about the letter of the law. Well, the letter of the law, well, could have been exercised here tonight by them putting Joe back in that seat. And that would have been well within their right and within the letter of the law.
How do you feel how the letter of the law, it kind of only applied to Joe Males but not for Bonnie Wright?
Yeah, it only applied to Joe Males. Bonnie Wright came back, she moved out of the state, and then she came back to vote, and they didn't care about the letter of the law then, because Bonnie Wright is involved with the same special interest groups that is getting in these people's pockets. And I don't really know what the motivation is, I don't know if there's money being exchanged, but maybe we need to have some kind of, of.
Investigation, yeah.
We need to have an audit and see, and see what's really going on here. What is the motivation behind keeping Joe out? Joe was good for this city, he's good for this whole valley, and if we don't have guys like Joe and Carly and Malcolm on this, on this council, then we are failing ourselves as a city and as a valley. We really need to do something, folks. But when we come around, like I said, we come around asking for you to vote again in this special election, please just do what you did before. Let's put Joe back in that seat.
Now, what is your opinions on as far as Bonnie Wright coming back from her new home out of state to make a vote on moves and stuff that they were doing on budgets? Do you feel, as a business owner in our local community, that those, whatever was voted on should be annulled and revoted?
Absolutely. I think if we, if we're going to follow the letter of the law, let's follow the letter of the law, let's revisit that, let's go back and see what really happened there. Bonnie Wright came back out of state to vote, and they didn't care about the letter of the law then, because Bonnie Wright is one of them. She doesn't care about us, she doesn't care about the, she's not down in the trenches, Russ Brown's not down in the trenches. What's her name?
Linda.
Linda Crouppa, she's not down in the trenches. We got Malcolm, we got Carly, and we had Joe. And if we don't get Joe back, we don't have a favorable council to handle the business of this city like it should be handled.
It will end up being handled by their agenda.
It'll be ended up handled by their special interest group, and I'm not sure what their motivation is, but I know it's not pure and holy, I know it's lining their pockets and they're not for the people. Folks, we're letting six, seven people make the decisions in this city that, I mean, we voted him in two-to-one. We got, how many people, six, how many people voted Joe in?
Six thousand?
Six thousand, three hundred and five people or something like that. And now six or seven people that form this special interest group are taking that away from us, so they can line their pockets by building ghettos or whatever the heck they want to do.
Stealing an election, they did.
They did steal an election, absolutely.
So they're basically, really, if you look at it, with the outcome of all this that's going on, they're basically telling us, the people, our votes don't count.
Our votes don't count.
We don't have a voice.
Our votes don't count, our votes don't count. We have six or seven people that are making the decisions for this whole valley, and our children are going to suffer, our elderly are going to suffer, our veterans are going to suffer, and all for the lining the pockets of six or seven people in this valley that they probably don't even live in this valley, but they're making money on this valley. You better believe that.
That's Michael's story, folks, and he's sticking to it.
God bless you and good night.
So what is your opinion on the outcome of tonight after the city council meeting regarding of Joe Males with fifteen C?
I think that I'm very proud of Malcolm, and I'm very proud of the mayor, who stood up for Joe. And my real opinion about this is, when does Hemet take accountability for the mistake that they made on their website, that it was for the old way of running for Hemet when there was no district? So really, it's Hemet's fault that caused this, and why didn't they stop it before it even got to the point of being put on as a vote? And I'll be quite honest with you, there, if you're looking for a candidate that really does care, you need to look at this gentleman. He is one hundred percent for District Four, and he's also a hundred percent for Hemet to better it, to bring more businesses in, to count, and to establish the local businesses that are here. And he backs up a lot of the church organizations that are here, he's a godly man, and that's what we need in our politics nowadays. So I urge you guys, they're going to go into a special election to cast your vote for Joe Males, and by doing that, he is going to give you a hundred and twenty percent of his time, effort, and availability to make District Four a better place.
Now, what do you think about Russ Brown's comment about the law is the law, the law only applies to us when it came to Joe Males, but what, where was the law is the law when Bonnie Wright left out of town and moved out of town and made votes? Do you feel that those votes that she made should be reannulled?
I think, I believe that those votes should be recounted. I think that the measures whatever passed with her name on it at that time should be known, bold, just like they took his candidacy away, they should take away those votes.
That's right.
One thing about it, that Bonnie Wright did not live in the state of California no more when she came back over here and she signed these papers. And Russ Brown knew about it, and Linda Crouppa knew about it, because they were at their going-away party, and I know that.
We know it. So, well, let's talk law then, right?
Right.
Go ahead. So what's your opinion? What you got to say about tonight?
I'm saying that they didn't appoint him, but I'm glad it's going to a special election. That way the voters can vote for the man they voted for.
So Joe, what is your thoughts on the outcome of tonight's city council meeting?
Well, I think, you know, I'm pretty happy with what Carly and Malcolm were saying, and, you know, I couldn't believe how ugly Linda got, you know, and really disturbing the way she was acting. But, you know, she pulled my papers, you know, my four-sixties to give the grab, so I knew she was going to vote for him, but I was hoping Russ would vote, and unfortunately he didn't, so, you know, I don't understand, you know, they let Bonnie come back from Arizona to vote on something that she had no business voting on.
After she moved!
After she moved, but yet, you know, me pulling my papers when I had an agreement on, you know, on renting the house, and, you know, just because I wasn't there, but the agreement was there, so I went on a handshake, and that's what my fault was, so, I don't know.
No, we want to talk law, you know, and like, Russ Brown was saying, you know, well, the law is the law, we got to go follow the law.
But he allowed.
But where was the law when Bonnie Wright moved out of state and came back and voted?
Right, well, I guess, you know.
The law only accounts only if you're not on the do-dirt crew in the action group committee, you know?
Yeah, if you have an agenda.
Law don't matter.
And I don't fit their agenda, so that's, that's all there is to it. I'm not a stupid man, I'm, you know, I see the, you know, what's going on, so, hey, you know, they're not for me, so that's fine.
Well, you know, you have the power of the people behind you. You won this election two-to-one, now you're going to win it three-to-one, because why? Now everybody knows what's really going on, people know who you really are now, those that didn't do now, and, you know, you're great for the community, you've got my T total support, and we hope that the community will come together and revote Joe. Yes, our elections were stolen by the do-dirt crew, we call them, but you know what, we have the power.
We're seeing it every day, we're seeing what they're capable of doing, and it's sad that a small city like Hemet has to have big-city politics, but hey, that's how it is, and if people want to vote these people back in, that's fine.
And we'll just film the city going to hell in a handbasket, you know? Joe, I do want to say thank you for what you have done and the moves that you have made with Carly Meyer and Malcolm.
Oh yeah, we were a majority there, we got things done, and that's what I'm hoping to do again, once I get back on.
So you're going to run again?
Oh yeah, definitely.
Folks, you got to vote again.
Vote me in, vote me, vote Joe twenty, twenty-one to twenty, twenty-two.
And we're going to do campaigning, starting now, we're going to be knocking on everybody's doors.
Definitely, definitely. Well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, but.
I appreciate it.